Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of October. You can almost feel the fall in the air and we're about to wrap up the end of this year. Emocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Buck Robertson, respect to the flag will be given by Councilmember Don Chapman. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight thanking you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Make us wise in our decision tonight as this council does its duty. Be with our service people who are in armed way, be with our firemen and our policemen protect us here at home. We ask these things in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our September 22nd meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No motion.
First by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of September 22nd passed unanimously. We'll move directly into our old business. We have three items of old business and our first item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone approximately 15 acres generally in the West Franklin Street-Doolie Avenue area from RM10 multifamily residential to a PDD which is a planned development district. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I could, I'd like to just welcome Don Oglesby. Don's Executive Director with Homes of Hope here tonight. If you have any questions, he can certainly answer those for you. We would like to thank Don and the effort he's made with Dr. Thompson and her group at the Westside Community Center in advancing this project and make sure it's complimentary to the Westside Community Center because it does border on two sides, the Westside Community Center. It is a request for a planned development district. It will house up, it will eventually have 80 residential units to be constructed in four phases and you can see the master plan for that site. The reason for the PDD, it does allow the city and the developer to come up with specific development guidelines regarding the density, the setback, green space, and other matters. Again, each residential building will be on individual lots and then the remainder of the property will be common property. You can kind of take a look at the master plan if you haven't already. There's a lot of open space, playgrounds, community gardens, walking trails. Each of these units will consist of three bedrooms with a mixture of one and two stories. And I know some of you, especially on the Housing Committee, have seen some of the Homes of Hope other projects and again, I think this will be a nice residential opportunity for that area. And Don and Homes of Hope have done a great job here so far and in Greenville too and their other locations. This went before the Planning Commission on October 7th and comes before you with their unanimous recommendation. So we'd recommend this to you on first reading. Again, Don's here and Maurice McKenzie, your planning and development directors here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have any questions that council needs answered right now?
Well, I've met several times with Mr. Oglesby and we've talked about that project and I think it's really an outstanding project. It's going to be, do a lot for that community. It's going to enhance the property around the community. It's going to be a good partnership with the Westside Community Center. So I'd like to recommend that we pass this on first reading.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. We'll move directly into our second piece of old business and ask for a request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1341 East River Street from RM10 multifamily residential to GC general commercial. Mr. Moore?
But again, kind of along the same lines tonight, on behalf of the Anderson Housing Authority, Jeff Treames back here. Jeff, he can answer any questions you might have about specifics of the project. He has also kept Councilman Stewart, whose district this is in, informed and Tony, even though he's not here tonight, is supportive of rezoning this to general commercial. This was a laundromat, would now be converted to office and other related space for the housing authority. Their main mission out of this building would be to obtain training opportunities for employment for their clients and others in the area. Again, if you see the map, the location, maybe you had a chance to ride by. This also went to your Planning Commission, was approved unanimously on October 7th. So the staff recommends first reading tonight.
Any questions, comments?
I do have one.
Mr. Lockridge.
How long has that laundromat been enacted? Several years.
Several years according to Mr. McKenzie.
Prior to 2010. Well, it's been, so it's been vacant for a long time. I'd like to make a motion if we go ahead.
Okay. First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Mr. John Roberts. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question. I noticed the surrounding area is, what is that, multifamily or?
Yeah, R and C.
Yeah, I mean, is there any reason we're going to general commercial as opposed to maybe office professional or something lesser?
No, sir. Any zoning classification like limited office or neighborhood commercial, general commercial in this case, would work. We just chose general commercial just because it gave them that flexibility to do what they wanted to do and directly across the street is general commercial zoning. So although it's on that one side of the street, that's the only commercially zoned property, if it is rezoned, it does closely match what is across the street and that's the reason for it. But again, any zoning classification would work. The parcel, as you can see, is small. I don't have the acreage in front of me, but that in itself would limit what you could do to it anyway regardless of its limited office or general commercial.
My only point is that, you know, you're going from the exact same zoning as all the area around it to the high, one of the highest commercial uses there is and why not go to something less than commercial if it would fulfill the needs for the time being?
That's correct.
Always do it later, go to general commercial, I guess, but...
Yeah, we could certainly make sure the applicant's okay with that based on what we've been told, limited office would allow them to do what they are requesting, so.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm asking you as a zoning administrator, would you not feel like that would be the more prudent way to go?
We did consider that and that would be something that's very viable. We were okay with it both ways. Again, the reason we went with general commercial is that's what they were asking for and it was across the street. So it just most closely matched it just from a zoning map standpoint. But again, limited office is the next bump up from multifamily, so it wouldn't be as intensive. So we would recommend that as well. We just feel like that the size of the parcel would limit the ability to do whatever more than the zoning would.
Well, yeah, but then somebody buys a parcel next to it, then they have the argument that, oh, well, this parcel right next to them is general commercial, so I want mine to be general commercial too.
Yeah, they could, they could do that and the parcel beside it is similar to this. They're both commercially developed already. It's non-conforming right now, but the building, the laundromat facility is a commercial building. It's nothing residential about it. It's a commercial building, but fortunately they're looking at making it into an office type building. But again, limited office would certainly work. We have neighborhood professional as well, but I believe that would be more limited. Limited office would be the least intensive zoning that would work for the applicant in this particular situation.
If you'd like, Mr. Mayor and Council, go ahead and get first reading and then before the second reading, we can kind of give you pros and cons of the two and maybe address some of those questions.
Thank you.
And also make sure that Jeff and those don't have something that we're not familiar with.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I saw a move, we do that.
We already had it on the most.
We already did.
Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Our last item of old business is request second and third reading of ordinance 1414, amending chapter 58, section 58-2 of the Anderson City Code providing for the qualifications of municipal judge. Mr. Moore?
Again, Mr. Mayor and Council, you gave a first reading of this matter at your last meeting. The purpose of this is to allow you to get immediate or sooner judicial support on a temporary basis for the court system. As we mentioned, Judge Madison is alone right now at this time without an assistant judge and we'll be talking about some of those people that might fill these specifically in executive session a little while later. Again, your current code does require that the judge and the assistant judge be a member of the bar, be a practicing attorney with a four years minimum experience in the state and again, you'd appoint them for four-year terms, up to four years, not less than two. So we'd go ahead and recommend that you approve this on second and third reading tonight. Again, allow you to take maybe some action later on the council meeting about appointing some people to help the judge on a temporary basis.
Thank you. We've talked about this a lot. It's been really vetted in the committee process. Any other comments, questions?
I believe we pass this on first reading.
Second.
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Buck Roberts. Discussion?
Is this?
Yes, sir.
Is this, this is second reading, isn't it?
Second reading, I believe.
Yes.
Second.
He said first, that's what.
I understand, directed, it's second reading.
Second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Making a motion, we accept it on the third and final.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. We'll jump right into new business. Got three items there too. We will go with the first item and that's request consideration of an ordinance amending the 2013-2014 budget. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, our auditors have been in and about finished up their field work and what we try to do, there's a number of actions. You actually, the budget you adopted for 2013-14, you looked at back in May of 2013. So a lot of time goes on between it and the end of the year and all these should be actions that you have given previous approval to and so we are allocating the funds to more properly reflect the budget that you approved. But let me mention these specifically. We're increasing the general fund by $962,788 and I'll talk about that in just a second. Hospitality fee budget went up $377,459 and community development $967,615. I'll take the community development first. It's the easiest of them to explain, I guess, in that what HUD does, you get an allocation of dollars roughly $700 and some odd thousand per year and you never, and they don't expect you to spend those in one calendar year. So each year you, whatever's left over, you roll those and if you look at those details, that's pretty much what this one is. The other parts are for some various expenditures, primarily grants that come in after the budget and some other projects that you approve. But what you'll see in those details, and I won't go through them unless you ask me to, there's a justice assistance grant for the police that was received after the adoption of the budget. You made a decision to expand the Westview Cemetery with a loan from the perpetual care to get that done. That's reflected. The fire department also had a grant for incident management team which is reflected in there and then you had the decision to construct Ren Park. A few other odds and ends, we look at like health insurance and if there's any kind of compensation or wage adjustment for the employees, again, this is over a year ago. You put those in a contingency, so when you make your decision to do whatever you're going to do on those, then we take that contingency and allocate it out to police, fire, public works, or wherever, so that their budget, when they're looking at and trying to manage their departments, properly reflects what they would have in the way of health insurance and pensions. So anyway, that's kind of a brief explanation. Hopefully you got a chance to look at it and you recognized everything that you'd seen earlier in the year. So we'd recommend that you amend the budget for our auditors to account for the budget on first reading.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Well, let me ask a question.
Mr. Kirby?
Are you saying, John, that the auditors have requested us to do this or recommended that we do this or?
It's, I mean, again, it's a generally accepted practice for us and other cities to do that. So otherwise, I mean, they can make some notes around it, otherwise it would improperly reflect or it'd look like budgets had exceeded what you had approved. Without the grants being reflected, for example, in the police department, it might look like the police had exceeded their budget by $100,000 and they would have had an unfavorable balance. This just makes them hopefully break even or be right there about it.
But I mean, it's not something the auditors say this is what you need to do.
You don't have to do it, no sir.
Well, I'll go ahead and wait till the thing's been moved, but I do have a comment to make.
I'm making a motion, we accept it on first reading.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? Mr. Kirby?
Well, my comment is just that, you know, we've wrestled with this back and forth for a number of years and I've just never really been comfortable for the most part in doing it because, you know, a budget is a projection of what you're going to spend. It's not, it's not a clairvoyant process that you, you know, you match what you're going to spend with what you project penny for penny. I've always been stricken with the idea by doing this, we're basically rewriting history and that just makes me a little bit uncomfortable and I've thought about it and thought about it and it's like, why am I uncomfortable with it? And I've come down to decide that I think when it comes time for the next year's budget, I would be more comfortable seeing, okay, last year we budgeted X and we spent Y. Now, why, why is that different? And then the explanation would be readily forthcoming that, well, we got a grant in and allowed us to do this. But by doing what we're doing now, we are basically artificially inflating the, in many instances, the operating budget for a number of different departments. And so when we get ready to do the next budget, we say, well, what was the budget last year? Oh, it was X. Well, what did we spend? We spent X. And so what were we going to spend this year? Oh, we spent X. Well, I just think that's a false premise to begin a budget process. Therefore, I think we should not do this and I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Chapman?
Don't, when we go through the budget process, don't we have notation about what money is coming from the general fund and which one came from grants and things like that?
Sometimes you do, Councilman Chapman, but again, like a police grant, a lot of times, those aren't even available till after July 1. I mean, just like last week, you got a notice on the traffic. We don't have any, we put in for that traffic grant $199,000 every year. It's first year and probably four or five has been awarded. So again, I mean, I understand what Councilman Kirby's saying and let me do this too, just so that rather than hear it from me, why don't I ask our auditor, not just change the opinion, but give his recommendation or their recommendation on what they see other cities do and how they would treat it if we didn't amend it versus how we treat it when it is amended.
Let me say that, you know, I don't think it's a right or wrong answer. I think it's just a matter of how you prefer it be done and maybe some benefits in how you, the information you receive in the next budget cycle and that's why I, that's why I've come to look at it. So that's my position.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
I kind of see this as being a way of, John, and the staff recommend, actually seeing that this discrepancy, they recognize this discrepancy and therefore he is saying, here's how we correct that discrepancy before the auditors even have a chance to see it. And I, you know, I guess Steve's got an opinion with that. Like he says, every year this comes up, we talk about it. So, you know, I don't think, I don't see anything wrong with what you're doing. You know, you recognizing that that is, something might be questionable, so you're correcting it before the auditors question you about it.
Anything else?
I just have one.
Mr. Chapman?
It is, to clarify, I guess what Mr. Kirby's argument is, is that he's saying that because we, if we have 10% of the budget for the police department or the fire department is inflated because they got grants, but the following year, they don't get those grants, then it's showing that we got 10% more in the budget than what's necessary or what would be allowed because they may or may not receive that grant. But in the same time, in the same approach, they can also get 10% over their allotted amount the following year. They could get 20% of their money in grants.
Could, yes.
Okay.
The same thing you'd have on capital equipment. If you had a fire truck that was going to be purchased in one year, if you're looking from year to year without going through the details, you might see $2 million, ooh, $3 million, back to $2 and it may, what happened in that year? Of course, you'd go to the details and you'd see they bought a million dollar matter truck or something. So again, we, there's not a right or wrong answer. What this is, we use it, you use it, as Councilman Kirby says for one thing, we use it. It helps people like Jim. You know, in this grant, there's going to be two officers, two vehicles, and $199,000. So as he's looking at the 50% mark, when it's over here on his revenue side and he's spending, he's going to be, he looks at his numbers and knows that he's on track or he's over or under or whatever.
Yeah, but this, but this is six months after the fact.
I agree.
So I mean, that's not doing me any good. I mean, it's a year after the six month mark.
Correct. We'll do another, we have another one in December for the mid-year adjustment, so.
That's why I think it's a good idea to bring in a county, to have them.
Yeah, we'll get them to, they're going to be coming in November anyway, but I'll go ahead and get them to kind of put in writing.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Probably yes on everyone except Mr. Kirby. Eighth unit or, what is it? But you know, I mean, it is, you know, the auditors and these guys do a lot of, they audit the municipal association and I notice even at the municipal association, that budget process. So they will be in in November and we can get them to address this. Our next item of new business is request consideration to purchase a vehicle for the Economic Development Division. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for the low bid and it's actually not the low bid in this case, but it is a local developer, a 2015 Explorer for $25,049 is the second low bid. Vic Bailey is a state contract and they are the low bid at 24,561. So it's a difference of $488. You get a year newer vehicle and even though they're not in the city, they are a local vendor. So we're recommending you award the bid to them at $25,049 for a 2015 Ford Explorer for Economic Development.
Thanks, sir. Questions, comments?
I have one.
Mr. Chapman?
Will this vehicle be branded with the city logos?
Yes.
Well, I have a comment too.
Mr. Kirby?
You know, reviewing this information, it, I read the part where it says it's going, this purchase will be charged to the Economic Development Budget. So I got my handy copy of the budget that we got a while back for this, this year and I couldn't find the Economic Development Division in there anywhere. So I called up and asked about it and it's not in there. It's part of what we put into a contingency fund along with some other things. So the money's in there, but it's not broken down into a budget for that new, newly created department. My only concern, and I had conversation with Linda today about this, but I would ask that we go ahead and create a budget for this newly created division right away so that we know, you know, what the funding is and that, you know, our, our folks know what it is and everybody kind of has a picture of what we're doing here.
Certainly a fair question and we can do it sooner than later. Generally what we would do as we go through this process, they are, there were about five items, I think, that we had earmark for Economic Development, you had a kind of a wage item, I don't remember the rest of them, but.
Insurance.
Detention officers and some other things that have now come or in place and we certainly have roughed those out and they would be in the December six-month budget amendment, but we can get them to you quicker if you'd like. But I'll get those out to you.
I'd imagine that on the side, you guys have been trying to probably figure it out where all this was going.
Yeah, some of that in this case is, since this one is so new, we weren't sure what all the pieces would need for.
See, I think that is, that is legitimate amendment process and you're taking money out of, you know, we funded, we had it in the budget under one category and you're saying, okay, we're going to take it out of here now and this is what, where we're going to put it and how we're going to spend it and so on. So I think that's, but that needs to be done.
Yeah, and it is in the process along with all those other things that you had in the contingency, they get allocated out of the contingency of where they belong. Like I say, the detention and this is two of them that come to mind and the wages too. But we'll have that, we'll go ahead and get something roughed out sooner than later on that and then we'll make it official with a budget amendment. Usually we do that in December.
December again. Anything else? Mr. Harbin?
Mr. Moore, you know, with this new division, how do we decide, how do we decide on which vehicle? You know, I saw that you had a Tahoe and a Durango and a Forerunner and an Explorer. You know, I see other economic people around our area drive, you know, Suburbans or larger vehicles. What, is there a particular reason you came up with an Explorer?
Well, again, Councilman Harbin, we primarily looked at, given the functions that they would do in taking, marketing the city, possibly taking clients to look at properties. Again, most of the counties, you're right, they have the larger SUVs. We felt like the Explorer was sufficient for municipal work. No real rhyme or reason other than just kind of keeping an eye on what others are doing.
With that, I'd make a motion, we approve this. First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge.
One more question.
Yeah, I know, about cut you off there. Mr. Kirby?
Is this going to be a take-home vehicle or is it going to be a stay-at-the-city vehicle?
We do have some take-home, police chief, fire chief, utilities and we had planned, I had, since that's the city management authority, it's part of the compensation package, allocated this one for take-home.
Which questions are being asked? Does that mean that you can go on and purchase, if we vote for this, you can go on and purchase the vehicle?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Last item of new business is request consideration to purchase replacement cameras and recording equipment for the federal detention center in the Anderson Police Department. Mr. Moore?
I got the chief and I think Captain Doyle Carpenter are back there with us. This goes back to the system when we built the federal jail. We installed a camera system in 1998. I'm not going to give you all the details. It was an analog system. We now need to upgrade it to the digital system. It allows, in the pod system of that jail, the one person generally speaking can oversee the entire pod and so what we're proposing is replace all 22 cameras with the new SDI HD. Chief, I talked to you about, a little more about that. The DVR which retains the recordings, some other computer-related. Even though this was very difficult to bid out, we did try to look at several proposals. It's not a bid per se. We use Georgia Detention, does all the doors and automated part of your jails and they also do this. Their price was $14,635 for a turnkey job. We also looked at a local contractor, that price was $27,795 and then we did have a third one, I think was $17,390. So again, Georgia Detention is already here doing all your doors and all your other automated stuff, so we thought the price seemed right. It is a state-of-the-art system for the police department, so we would recommend that you award this bid or this, this contract to Georgia Detention, $14,635,37 for what we just specified above and it will come out of the detention budget.
Great. Do I have any questions for Chief Stewart?
Making a motion, we accept it on general approval.
Second.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Minister Breese?
Just a couple of things and again, in the essence of time, we do have some executive session matters we need. You can look at the quarterly report. Hopefully you'll be able to see the major items that you've identified in your retreat downtown and recreation and other matters and housing and development are progressing according to plan. We also have major projects such as the courts, we'll talk about in a little bit and some other things you can look through at your leisure. Feel free to call me or any of the people involved in those, we'll be glad to share those with you. As far as the calendar, we only gave you the October calendar right now. We are beginning to kind of wind things down as we get into the fall season. Because of the weather forecast, we are going to cancel, move night at Carolina Ren Park tomorrow night. So what that leaves is, I think, the last three block parties for the calendar year and then you'll meet again on the 27th. That's all we have, Mr. Mayor. We would ask you to go into executive. We would ask you to go into executive session.
Before we do that, I do have one more thing on the calendar. There's, Anderson County is having a, the Great Anderson County Cleanup, which will be this Saturday on the 18th from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If I understand it right, our city folks are at a meeting right now at the Civic Center in regards to how the city of Anderson can participate in that. And we reached out, or have reached out to our community groups in the city to see if they would like to participate in this event. And council members, if you know anybody in your council or in your districts that would like to participate, please contact Brandy.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing. I just wanted to comment about Fresh Taste. Fresh Taste, that was last Tuesday. I think it went very well. The weather was perfect. I thought the staff did a great job and it was a fantastic turnout.
Very good.
We do it twice a year. Spring and fall.
That's easy for us to say. We don't have to put them together.
I mean, we had time to harvest the crops, by surprise.
Mr. Moore, executive session?
There's two matters. One of economic development and the second will be personnel regarding the municipal court. And I would hope that we'll come back out with some recommendations regarding municipal court.
Great. I entertain a motion to go into executive session. First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand in executive session.
So moved.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand out of executive session. In executive session, I mean, we did talk about our contractual matter, economic development in regards to possible property disposition, and we do not have any, any action to be taken on that. We do have some action to be taken on the personnel matter, the municipal court, and I'd like to get that action on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the recommendations in the committee meeting, selecting Gert Seaton and Matthew Lawless as ministerial reporters.
We have that motion.
On a second.
Temporary basis.
On a temporary basis.
First by Mr. Lockridge introducing the action, and second by Mr. Roberts, Buck Roberts. Any discussion, further discussion? I think the council agrees that this is a matter that we need to address, and the temporary